Commission, this is our bi-weekly work session. It is a time in which commissioners appear with each other to chat and we don't have an agenda. And we just discuss issues amongst ourselves, things that we may be doing, questions we may have for each other, etc. All five commissioners are here. I will note to our participants that Commissioner Gonzalez is with us, but he's having internet connectivity issues. And so he's turned video off so that he can listen in and participate. I will threaten that I may have to do the same thing as I'm having internet issues as well. An earlier meeting this morning, I froze in a very strange format and I would hate to do that for this group. So with that, we've got our commissioners with us. We've got Director Murphy, we've got AG Davenport. Who wants to lead off? Who's got something for the good of the cause that we should talk about?
Yes, I'll just say that I wasn't sure if we were fully lined out on our kind of mapping out of the rest of the financial assurance, you know, steps. So that was one thing that I just had more of a question about and kind of what dates we knew of so far. Understanding that obviously when it comes to the actual rulemaking, we're still kind of in progress with figuring out all of that. And then I didn't know if we wanted to revisit our list of informational dockets because I think we're almost through our sort of first set. Yeah, and then I guess while I still have a floor, I'll just mention a couple of quick things. I think I think I already mentioned that I talked to CPW folks about giving an update on the wildlife rules, our 1200 series at their at their commission meeting. Looks like that's going to happen now in their June 10th and 11th meeting, which is in person in Trinidad. So if anybody else is planning to attend, I think they also will have virtual capabilities, I'm sure. And then I've WRA also approached Julie about a presentation related to the wildlife series rules. And so I'm working with her and Megan and possibly also a couple of other staff to put together a presentation for that as well. But it's more of just sort of the wildlife rules and how and when there will be opportunities for the public to provide information as needed as it goes through our process. So that's all I have.
Yeah, on that last point, are you gonna attend the Trinidad hearing and present on behalf of commission?
Yes, and I and I'm going to be working with Julie and staff, you know, on the actual presentation beforehand, of course. But that's my plan. I think I am planning to go in person since I am now completely and totally vaccinated. But I'm, you know, leaving the option open of participating remotely.
To segue a little bit, I wonder, I don't know if we're all vaccinated at this point. And if we want to kind of, as we're looking ahead into our schedule, do we want to try to solidify a date for an away meeting? Somewhere else around the state, I'm kind of looking at Director Murphy. I just feel like that's something we probably want to plan in advance so that we can all get it on our calendar and and put in, you know, time on both sides for travel, etc.
Commissioner, and the other component that we will need to sort out on on our end is what does it look like to participate in? Well, my my expectation would be that the commissioners would travel, but we would still provide Zoom participation for anybody who wanted to listen in or who needed to participate in that hearing, including some members of staff or others. And so we will need as part of preparing for that to evaluate how to run a Zoom meeting with all of you in the same room and potentially participants in the same room in a way that's broadcast through Zoom and also accessible. So we have some logistics to sort out on that that I'm woefully unqualified to figure out. And so, yes, I think picking a date or some timeline on that and then giving us a location would allow empower Mimi and I and and the hearings team to handle the logistics.
Could we start in by honing in on a month that you think might be good for us to do an away meeting?
My only other hesitation is, you know, making sure that we're in alignment with the direction from the Department of Natural Resources in terms of in-person gatherings and meetings. And as yet, I don't have that specific guidance. I think that the best guidance that I have is that there is a willingness to allow folks to return to the office starting June 1 as needed with a number of the same protocols in place. And so that to me suggests that anything in June. I guess a couple of things I could try to check in with the department about what this looks like and whether it's, you know, allowable. I also don't remember whether we're allowing state travel for work right now. So maybe I need to check in on a couple of pieces and circle back. I had always hoped or thought that this fall we would be able to travel a bit. And perhaps late summer, but.
Actually, that just made me realize that maybe that affects, does that affect my travel to participate in the CPW meeting as well, perhaps? Do I need to check in on that?
Fortunately, CPW is within the Department of Natural Resources. So hopefully that means the questions to my, the answers to my questions are known and more affirmative than I realize. But do you know the timing? What's the timing on that presentation?
I don't know the the specific like on the agenda, but the dates of the 10th and 11th of June.
Okay. So, yeah, I'll check in. I mean, tentatively, we've also, I've also started getting folks travel populated on a calendar or we started to do that so we could look at something in the later summer. As a tentative, would look to you all to tell me where. I mean, I've heard Tahiti is lovely, but.
Second that.
Lots of oil and gas development happening. Check that out. That's a joke, just in case there's any doubt.
Right, right, right.
Are we looking for suggestions on where to go at this point to kind of talk through? I would throw out that that we go out west. It's pretty easy for us to see what's going on in the front range. I think many of us have visited local operations around here and visited with the operators around here. And I think it'd be nice to to get up over to the west side and talk to some of those folks out there and some of the communities that have participated in our in our rulemaking and our proceedings so far.
I agree.
We've historically gone to Glenwood Springs as a county seat. Rifle is closer to more of the actual oil and gas development in the Peon's Basin. Grand Junction is a little bit far west. I think I'm sure West Look Cog is listening in right now and cringing at all the things I'm suggesting. We've gone to Meeker before, kind of thinking about the different layout of the Peon's Basin. We have gone to Gunnison. We don't have a ton of ton of activity there as John knows and can maybe provide more insights into whether there'd be a better location in that region. We also, in the southwest, Durango, La Plata County, obviously, there's a historical basin there. Still a fair amount of development and a pretty engaged group of people when I think about the rulemaking. And then the third slightly west, but more central option is Los Angeles County the Raton Basin down kind of south of Trinidad. And so those are, those are kind of, to me, the non northern front range options. Obviously, there is some development on the eastern plains of Colorado, too.
Is it possible for us to put some things together, Julie? And then maybe there's a commission meeting out there and then maybe there's maybe it's a more than a one day thing and that commission visits some sites and some community members and we can maybe put together a couple day agenda?
I think so. I think that our lawyers are going to be very, want to be very, very thoughtful about what it looks like when all the commissioners are coming together. But I think using the commission hearing as an anchor to conduct additional outreach, either individually or as a body, makes a lot of sense.
Well, I do think, I mean, since I've been seated on the commission, we have had meetings in Durango, we have had meetings in Glenwood Springs. And certainly those are central locations to be able to see those particular areas. You know, I, I do think there's other areas. I mean, I do think it's important to see the Piance and like the main plays in the Piance around rifle and parachute and you know, but then I'm curious about kind of rangeli and, you know, a little further northwest. Some of the stuff in Mesa County. And this is just me personally, as far as operations go from a tour standpoint, I do think trying just to find a a central location that makes sense, that has the technological capabilities to be able to handle a hearing, you know, ultimately determines where we can have the hearing itself. And, you know, there may be, you know, Glenwood or Carbondale or Rifle has those capabilities. Certainly Mesa County has those capabilities. If we want to see kind of the North Fork Valley, you know, Peonia, Hotchkiss or Delta is accessible for all of those, although one could also go from Glenwood up over McClure Pass into the North Fork Valley fairly easily to see those areas in and around there on a day trip. So in some respects, Glenwood does offer more of a central area for that northwest part of the western slope. You know, I think if we want to go see Dolores, Monizuma, La Plata County, Archeletta Counties, then Durango makes some sense down there as well. I'm actually really interested in this maybe is just a day trip, but to see some of the stuff in the northeast as well. So Morgan County, Albert County, Washington County. You know, some of those areas out there.
Maybe we could, you know, do if, once travel starts opening up, I would be interested in having a commission meeting out on the eastern side of the state also. And so maybe we could combine that, John, with some visits.
And John, as as you're well aware, you know, basically, all of the local governments, or at least the counties, would have, you know, sort of Zoom or Wi-Fi capability. So we could go to a commissioner's meeting room for those sorts of meetings if we're trying to do the, you know, the, have the virtual format for folks to participate as well.
Correct, correct.
And then Julie, I guess I'm gonna, I'm gonna advocate for, I realize, you know, the lawyers are nervous about whenever we all get together. I am very comfortable with us posting the fact that we're going to be in X place, visiting X people and posting it and understanding that people are basically coming from a place of good intent and allowing us the space to visit communities and operators, etc., when we're together and just being very transparent and posting it.
Well, I think there's a big difference between visiting sites to learn about, you know, what what is happening just from a very broad level versus doing site visits for applications, right? These are very different things.
Yeah, exactly, great. And we wouldn't be making decisions or anything on in those.
I mean, I'm happy to throw together an itinerary if if you want, or Julie, do you want to do that?
God, no, I would love for you to do that. Unless you want to see it sometime in 2022.
I think that sounds like a great idea, John.
And, and you know, not not to expand on the work on that, but since we've talked about basically the entire state in this narrowing down where we're going to go next, aside from maybe adding Jackson County in there and the North Park area. Perhaps there's ways we can quadrant out, you know, these these areas consolidate and just have kind of a hub, kind of a hub and spoke approach to to how we visit them. So, John, if you want to break that up, I'm happy to break that up. You know, you've divided the state in half. If you've got a pretty good idea about the connectivity for various counties and and various areas, I'm happy to let you run with that.
Yeah, I mean, I think that makes sense. I was thinking about just doing an itinerary for the kind of northwest part, right? Because I know that pretty well, you know, if you want to do northeast and do a hub and spoke around there, you know, I don't, I mean, I also very much would be interested in seeing kind of the Jackson County area as well, because that's, that's an area I have not looked at oil and gas operations in, so know very little about it.
What if we started with kind of the 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 western slope and John, your itinerary, then, you know, we can start populating, populating trips behind that.
So a couple, a couple of logistics things, I think it'd be helpful for me to understand the frequency, like, are we, do we want to travel once a month? Do we want to travel every other week? What does that cadence look like?
Quarterly, I think that's what we put in our performance plan, Julie.
Okay.
Sorry, I had to step aside to take a call, but did this discussion also involve sort of, you know, rig tours, field tours as well? Or were we just talking about having meetings at commissioner locations or jurisdictions?
I think it was having a standard Wednesday hearing, probably tie in an extended local public comment period. And then some associated field visits, right? Whatever they may be, it could be wildlife sites, it could be oil and gas locations. I mean, it could be a number of different things depending on where we're going and what we're interested in.
And I guess I envision, you know, some mix of operators and maybe, you know, NGOs or folks who have been communicating with the commission over these many months and seeing if we can, you know, we could host maybe a coffee or something and or if they want us to see something, maybe we could set up some of those types of meetings. All posted, all transparent, all public.
AG Davenport just swooped into the meeting. Kyle, did you have anything to add?
It appears.
You're. You're in a lovely location.
Okay, um, I apologize. I'm on my phone now. I completely missed that conversation. I was resetting my internet and so.
We're all good then, we're all good.
We didn't say anything that would cause you to have any concerns.
None at all.
We weren't worried that you appeared at a particular time.
Also, we sound like kids that just screwed up. We didn't do anything, we didn't do anything.
It's all good, it's all good.
Okay, so just to circle that up, then, we're going to look to Commissioner Messner for a memo. And that, that's awesome.
And yeah, I just, I just wanted to echo Karen's suggestion on, you know, some, some sort of opportunity, I think, beyond like the public comment in the hearing for community engagement.
I don't have anything. I think Priya did ask some questions about financial assurances calendar. And I don't know if we're ready to chat about that or not, but general, general calendar. And I don't, I don't know if people have thoughts on that.
Yeah, I was more just, you know, what dates do we, are we definitely clear on? And, you know, I know we're kind of generally thinking further out for the actual rulemaking, but, you know, I know we had a couple of other things that we're still sort of ironing out. And so I'm looking at Julie to see.
Sure, so I have been working with the questions from the parties and, or not from the parties, but from folks who participated in the financial assurance informational docket and the questions that I've heard and questions from you all to try to put together a number of different sources of data, for lack of a better term. And I think that staff will be in a place to push those out on the 5th of May at the commission hearing. And I'm contemplating having an agenda item. If it's okay with you all to respond to some of those questions and to walk through, not really walk through that data, but walk through what the data is and then make it publicly available on the financial assurances webpage and and let all of our interested folks know kind of what that information is, what we think it answers or how and how it's called. Yep, and and hopefully that helps kind of shape the next steps. And if there are additional questions that you all want to put forward to people for either a written or oral presentation, we could also push those out on the 5th at that point in time, if that makes sense. And we can get kind of all that dialed in in the coming few days. Okay, so I'll keep working on that front and we'll plan on a staff presentation with data sets and also, you know, some, some information. I think some of the questions that have come up are how does a state claim a bond and kind of kind of things are really internal to our organization that I can walk through. And then also have the opportunity to pose some additional questions for folks to follow up with you. If if you would prefer written submittals, let me know and let me know how long. My idea would hopefully that folks would be able to respond to those questions in a couple of weeks, kind of towards the end of May, middle of May. And we can go from there. And we can have this all like slightly more formalized on Wednesday to share with whoever's not listening right now.
Sounds good. So you said May 5th would be the staff presentation and then there would be another day that would be potentially other presentations. Okay, great.
And then I think we're still working on May 12 for kind of the geology 10101. I saw that Priya made some changes and to the questions that I started. If you have anything to add, if we could try to do that sooner than later, I'm meeting with Dave early next week. And then we'll think about maybe some operators who could provide some insight about what's happening, you know, in different areas of this state and what that looks like. So.
Thanks for that reminder, Karen. I'll try to get into the doc today.
Thanks. And then Priya, I know it's sometimes, somewhere in the past, I think that related to reclamation, sorry, I'm heading down a bunny trail and away from financial assurance. But the discussion of what a variance request might look like and how that would work with our rules. And I don't know if we actually recovered that and wanted to have Kyle talk to us a little bit about that or not, not today, but.
Yeah, that was a separate, yeah, Julie, I think we talked about like a variances 101 because we are likely to be having things come before us so soon. So, yeah, do you, what's the latest plan?
Um, I, I think we could probably have that queued up for the 12th or the 19th.
I think we even talked about that could be on in one of these work sessions, too. So we could do it the next work session.
The two weeks from today.
Yeah.
Let's do that.
Everybody.
May I chime in for a second?
Oh, sure.
Or in conjunction with maybe a public.
I think he's saying executive session to start off with for discussion of variances and then perhaps.
Is this any better?
Yeah, that is better.
Okay, um, that I was saying that, good lip reading.
Well, there was no lip reading, Kyle.
Just robot translation.
Oh, got it, okay. Yeah, I think it, I think an executive session would be beneficial, at least in my view, and that can be in conjunction with a public presentation or just an executive session first and then a public presentation. If if that's the direction the commission would like to go, if it is an executive session world and it's on a, it's on a Friday, that's fine. We'll just need an agenda that identifies it.
What if we append executive session to the 12th? So we can build it into that agenda, folks can get kind of an introductory look, a little bit of time to think, and then staff can come back and walk through the process itself on the 14th, during, yeah, on the 14th during the work session.
Sounds good.
Sure.
Lots, lots of heads up and down, so we'll go, we'll make that happen.
Then for continuing on the info docket conversation, my topic was next at the kind of life cycle of a well. And I'm going to get that ball rolling very soon, so you should see a new template for that to bring up any questions. But the idea there is just kind of more on the operational side of, from everything from geology to to building, construction, drilling, completion, interim reclamation, final reclamation, etc. Try not to have too much overlap with what we've already had, but may be an opportunity for using some of the base knowledge that we've created over the last few months to ask some good questions about the operations as we learn about that. So I think that's scheduled for May 26th, tentatively, and I'll work forward with that date in mind.
Sounds good.
Yep, heads nodding up and down, Bo, thank you.
I see him, thanks.
Did we need to revisit our list? And I don't know if anybody had any thoughts on sort of reprioritizing some of the, the ones lower down the list or or if we just want to just kind of work our way through without any. I don't think we had any major urgency on the other ones.
We could start working down it.
Okay.
We're a lively bunch today.
The only thing I was thinking of in relation to the list, I don't know if folks, if the commissioners have it open in front of them, but it's is, is whether or not there's any matters that might be coming before us sooner than later that relate to any of these and and whether that, like Julie, you know, maybe it's even something that you and staff could take a look at. I think we have it in the folder that you all have access to. And and if there's anything, you know, that might make sense to kind of move up because it would be relevant to something we might be seeing, I don't know if that even makes any sense, maybe there really isn't anything, but that was just a thought.
I'll take a look. Priya and see if there's anything that I think should be elevated, but the cadence recorded a lot of topics and but yeah, I'll think about it. Thank you.
Jeff, did you have anything else?
I did not.
The other thing that we talked about last time we all met was the list of working groups and whether or not, and I'm not sure the right staffer here, Julie, for us to talk about it. We kind of teed that up to see if commissioners wanted to help take the lead on some of those. I don't have to call them working groups or kind of assignments that we made during mission change. I, I think so, I'm looking at the informational docket and one of them, one of the informational dockets is about pits, like the uses of the pros and cons, data art emission controls. That might be a good jumping off point because one of the small groups is related to what are, what are pit emissions and kind of issues related to pits. That might be a good informational docket for us to have first and then figure out as commissioners. I'm, I'm happy to work on the the pits issue. That sounds funny. But me, I would, I would probably appreciate an educational docket about it first and I'm willing to tackle that one if no one else wants to do it. Unless it's really exciting for somebody.
I think that sounds great and. I think that sounds great and, you know, I think that. Priya, I think you potentially were going to work on the wildlife biological resources sort of thing. I think what needs to happen on this front is. Each of the commissioners that are going to take up one of these. I think you need to have a strategy session with Julie and Mimi. Because they've done this historically at commission and they can provide you with the toolset. And sort of the procedure and process. To make that successful. So I guess that's what I would encourage as next steps is to set up those meetings. And Julie, I, I'll leave it to you if you want, you and me, we want to do that with. Each of us individually, which means you're doing it five times, or if you want to do it at a time when we're all together. Or whatever, however you think is best is the right answer on that front. But I do think there needs to be some sort of mind syncing there on how to. Appropriately and productively run one of those things.
I think so, from a high level, the, the place for. I think staff could gain the most utility from commissioners in this space is. Being the facilitator, right, coming in, identifying the question, identifying the scope of work, identifying the outcomes. Frequency of meetings, agendas, just really running the process. Because that, that falls, that it's a, it's a lot of work, it's really important work to have a successful outcome and to have meaningful engagement. And then it lets staff provide the technical and their technical insights or questions or participation. Without also having to manage kind of all of the. Organizational or structure, so though, that's where I would be looking for the most help on these different. Work groups, I don't want you to think that, you know, we're going to send you out into the world without any sort of technical support at all. But I think that that together will provide a nice blend of responsibilities. I think, you know, some of the other pieces are what are the ultimate outcomes, is it? A written report, is it a presentation, is it what, what are the goals and so. It's not quite like a syllabus, but that's kind of how I've been thinking about it in terms of what, what needs to get done and. I know that staff committed to kind of doing a deep dive on where we are and what needs to get done on these work groups. Let me circle up with our team that kind of fell off my radar. And actually get back to you about where we are and kind of. If you all can also independently look at the list of options and think about what, what, where you can intersect, I think. Karen, when I think about pits, I think you'd be a natural. Fit for it, you're welcome, given, given your familiarity with CDPE and air, air emissions in particular. Priya obviously makes a lot of sense on some of the wildlife tech. And other resources and then I think we had. A number of other, you know, options that we can choose from, given other people's availability and interest, so.
Yeah, Julie, you might want to look and see what Scott presented to us at the last insights meeting because he had a nice summary put together, I think. Also with kind of where staff was at, there was like a little column. And so we could, we could use that as a jumping off point.
Yep, yep, he sent me his notes and I read them and I didn't look at any of the tables in them, so that's, that was my mistake. But yeah, let's circle up, maybe we have a separate, I'm trying to think about when. The fifth is going to be pretty intense for me between now and then, so I, I don't want to commit to doing it on the fifth, but the 12th could be a possibility or. Anyway, I'll, I'll keep working on it and hopefully provide an update on, on Wednesday.
Be another insights meet, it's, sorry, it can be another one of these planning meetings too, it's kind of planning related, so that's okay.
Okay.
Well, I do think that we need to be prepared at that too, to take on. Two or three or one or whatever it is so that we know what we're doing so that we can jump in there, because I think that was part of the challenge. When Scott presented is I don't think there was an understanding from him that commissioners would be interested in being involved. And so he was kind of taking it straight from a staff perspective and. So I just think we need to tie these two things together and I think we have a responsibility to jump in there and say, these are the ones that we want. You know, we'll run with it from here.
Yeah, and, and just so the other commissioners, Julie and Greg and I did talk about the biological resources working group and. And I'm just, I'm going to put together kind of an outline that starts that sort of. Process of, of what we're trying to, you know, what we're intending to do and. And what the outcomes might kind of generally look like and then, then build that group and, and start doing that. But I think. The Riparian Technical Work Group. Julie, correct me if I'm wrong, I think our, my understanding from the SPP and then in talking with both Julie and Greg was that. That would be more of a staff level exercise that then they would come to us, to the commissioners to bring a. Sort of a, a framework that we would then discuss and potentially. Determine if it would need to be. How it would be integrated in, in rules. Did I, did I summarize that appropriately, Julie?
I think so, I, that said, I think. We all, staff needs help with that facilitation and organization component of all these, so. Right, let me check, well, I think you probably are clear, I just grasping your resources. Let me check in with Greg and Brett on that one, Priya, more specifically.
And, and that one was. There was not a specific timeframe like there was for the biological resources working group, so I'm definitely ready to, you know, jump in on, on the biological resources, but the. The Riparian area one, I think was, you know, was a little bit more. Technical and needed, and I didn't have a timeframe specifically associated with it other than kind of. As soon as everybody was able and given all the staff limitations right now with rolling out everything. You know, I, I definitely would just, I'm happy to help in that process too, but I also was. I guess the part that I still am a little bit unclear on is if it is something that then comes before the commission. Does my. Does my involvement preclude my ability to sort of weigh in on the outcome?
And, and from my perspective, Commissioner or Priya, sorry, I can't remember which, which, which hearing I'm in or meeting I'm in. And I know this isn't the legal answer and Kyle can provide that, but. I've, I've found these work groups to kind of result in a work product that may have some sort of recommendations or, or places for further work. And I think as long as it stays in that space, it's, it's fine to have a commissioner author it or present it. It's the findings of the group and, you know, I think if it's presented as such, that's a good thing and. If we want to make sure we have, get Kyle's legal opinion on it, we can do that probably in an executive session about how, how that. Will work when the time comes.
I, I agree, I, I think Julie summarized that accurately and, and just wanted to add that if we're, if you'd like an executive session, of course, happy to accommodate that.
Anyone have anything else? Alright, well, it's a beautiful day in the neighborhood, right?
Enjoy.
Alright. Everybody have a great weekend.
Thanks everyone.
Have a good weekend.